Okay, welcome to the Carver School Committee meeting of April 9th. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:02. Scott, would you give us an update on the Zoom policies, please?
Yeah, so just as a reminder, everybody, this is a virtual meeting, so it's a Zoom meeting. Just a couple of things. I am muting all the participants as they enter the meeting and people can, members of the committee can raise their hand and I'll let Andy know or that someone's raised their hand to be called upon during the meeting. All the votes will have to be roll call votes. I have disabled the chat function, so people will not be able to chat during the meeting. And I think, I think that's the key information that people, people need to know.
Okay, so we'll move forward to the-
Jason is raising his hand physically.
Okay.
Were you raising your hand, Jason?
No, it was just a reminder for people to raise their hand when they need to.
Yeah, and you can use the raise the hand function in your Zoom settings. So if you go to Participants, you click on the Participant List, you're able to, there's a function that says Raise Your Hand, and I will see that your hand's raised, as well as you could also physically raise it.
Okay, I'd like to go on to the pledge.
So, here we go.
Got our virtual flag?
Yep.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, good, Andy.
All right, so we need comments from the general public. Seeing none. Comments on the EAPC?
Hold on a second, I'll look through, see if anybody raised their hand for comment.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Nope, no, there are no hands raised for the general public.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the EAPC?
Hey, everybody. How's everyone doing? Everybody safe and healthy and safe with your families? Obviously, we just finished up our first week of remote learning. It's been a stressful time, I think, for everybody. I think it's a stressful time for not only the school community, but community of Carver in general. I mean, I think where everybody's really missing those, those interactions that are so key. You know, it has been a lot of work, a lot of hours into creating the remote learning. You know, Scott's been involved, that Tammy who's on this is, you know, put a lot of great work in. And even though we did, you know, the work's been put in to create that structure of remote learning, I think we all know that, you know, we can never really replace that classroom environment, so, you know, hopefully, you know, this, this, this time shall pass too, so.
Yes. All right, thank you, Tom. So then we'll go to approval of minutes for March 9th, 2020. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 9th open session minutes.
A second?
A second.
The motion, the second. All those in favor?
Roll call, right?
Oh, it's a roll call, sorry.
Yeah, baby, it's a roll call.
All right, so, okay, Andrew?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Stephanie? Still muted. Scott, you want to just unmute everybody for a minute?
Aye.
Okay, James?
Aye.
Okay, and I also am aye. All right, so I'd like to go for approval of minutes of March 28th, open session minutes, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 28th open session minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Andrew?
Aye.
Chase, James?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Okay, an aye as well for me. Okay, moving on. Reports from the superintendent. Carver Public School Remote Learning Plan. I'm on the wrong page here. There we go.
Okay, my goal is to do a quick overview of the key points of the learning plan that was sent out to the community last Friday. So it's an overview, the plan is based upon recommendations from the Department of Education. Sorry, I'm just muting everybody for a second. There we go. It outlines expectations for all staff in the district. And what, sort of like what Tom said, I want to reemphasize, you know, there's a focus in here that we can't replicate school through a remote learning model. And that's not our intention with the plan. You know, there's just a lot of great things that happen in that face-to-face communication on a daily basis, and we can't recreate those things. We want to support students academically, socially, and emotionally. It's kind of a general overview of the structure. At the middle high school, teachers will provide two to three hours of assignments/activities per class per week. And as part of that, two to three hours, we're looking at at least one hour of, per class per week, of what we're calling community time and ability to make connections with kids. That community time can take a lot of forms, including online videos like a Zoom, but obviously it can take other forms or Google Meets, but it can take other forms such as discussions, blogs, sharing documents and working on documents together, all ranges of communication, where we want some, some, some real-time contact. Students' assignments and experiences are going to be designed to provide meaningful educational experiences, and this includes reinforcing and deepening skills, but could also include additional content at the discretion of the teacher based upon the student's readiness and grade level. At the elementary school, teachers should be providing two to three hours per week, sorry, two, three hours per day of activities slash assessments for students, including four to five hours a week of community time. So in that two to three hours a day, they should have an hour there, where there can be some interaction between the student and the teacher. Students in grades three through 12 are expected to complete their work and are going to be assessed on a credit or no credit basis. Students pre-K through two will not have their work specifically assessed, and, and ultimately, I think the grading piece is going to be, has become the most challenging. And even within our first week, we've had some real thoughts and discussions about, and I don't even know if I want to use the word grading, grading's probably the wrong word to use, really had a lot of discussions around the concepts of assessment and what's assessment should look like. And I think we're looking to put out, to finalize a more concrete plan, to put out to the community at some point at the beginning of next week, that more clearly defines how student work is going to be assessed, assessed in grades three to 12, and what that credit, no credit system's really going to look like for the community. You know, if anything's generated discussion, at least from our understanding, for the administrators, for the teachers, from kids, has been, what does credit, no credit really mean? What does grading really mean? What does assessment really mean? And, and we think that this document really is vague, so I admit that what's in the remote learning plan is vague about that. And we want to tie that up and get out some more specifics to people in terms of, you know, what that, what that piece is going to look like in terms of the long-term assessment for students. One thing that both principals felt strongly about, and, and the staff has really been supportive of, is each building principal has developed what they're calling a landing page for students, where students can go and see the, the work, forecast events for the week. And in your background, I linked both the middle high school and the elementary version of the landing page. We're, we're trying to be clear with parents of, this is the spot you can go to to find out what you need your kids to do. And I can, I can show you an example of that. I gotta go back a second, but I'll go, I'll pull it up on the screen just so people can see it. Maybe, bear with me for a second. So this is the middle high school one. You know, so if you're a middle high school parent, how the system's being worked out is we're asking the teachers to update this by Monday, and on Monday morning, as kind of reminder, the, the principals are going to send out this kind of like landing page. So you know that if you have one of these teachers, and so for like the sixth grade team, they actually created a team page. And so, because sometimes there was a real concern, especially at the middle high school level, with the number of different teachers the kids have, that it might be hard for parents to navigate all this and find out, what do I need all my kids to do? So the thought process was, okay, here's one document that's going to be linked on the webpage, it's going to be sent out to parents on a weekly basis, that they can just go to that one email and say, hey, my student is on the dragon team, right? So I can go to the dragon team link and see what, what they need to do, to try to make it a little, a little clearer and more direct for parents in terms of what's happening. James, I saw you raise your hand.
So, will this be posted on the district site? And how are they communicating the access of this to the kids?
Okay, so this, it is posted on the district website, and this is being sent out, and when it's sent out at the middle high school level, my understanding is to both kids and parents. So through Jupiter Grades, the email will go out and, and they'll have this page that they can go to, to link to this information. And Ruby's done something very similar at the elementary school. So just, and so this is on the webpage. This actually takes you to the link on the webpage, then just go by grade. You go into second grade, and there's a newsletter for them. Maybe, slowly working. And so if you're a second grade student, this is the work you need to do for this week, and, and you can click on the link for Language Odds, so I'll tell you what they have to do for Language Odds this week. And again, this is all, we're trying to at least consolidate it a little bit for parents, so that they know what that information is in terms of those, those guidelines. You know, the actual, the entire remote learning plan is, this is a 10-page document. You know, my intention tonight wasn't to, and I'm sure you don't want me to, read through the document, so I just wanted to give you some big picture, to give you the big picture view, and I guess at this point I'd open it up to specific questions, you know, in terms of, of the plan and where we're going, and saying that, you know, right now, if the thing, if the thing that we need to tie it up a little bit is that assessment piece. Jason's raised his hand.
Has there been any consideration into giving printed material for people who can't access the internet?
So we have been working really hard to make sure that people, A, have internet access and B, have devices. We're totally open to that concept. I will say that in my office, we haven't, we've had some families who didn't have internet connection, we've actually worked with those families to get it. And it's that interesting thing about, you know, we feel, I feel like we've been trying real hard to communicate with people, that we want to support them in all kinds of ways, you know, even beyond just the internet. But sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And, so right now, I don't have any family saying to me, I need printed versions of materials, I can't access it, I can't get on the internet. The families who've said they can't get on the internet, we've been working with to support them through Comcast to have connections. And Comcast has been going out, I mean, I just know that, even this past weekend, I know of a family who was set up with an internet connection, who did not have one. So we're, we're doing that work with families, more than willing to provide paper copies right now or not, because we haven't had a family identify that they need that. But my fear a little bit, and I don't know how to get around this fear, is that there's someone out there who does need that, but we just don't know it yet. What, so and I guess my, my next piece on that will be, is one of the things that the administration and the guidance counselors are doing, is we're asking teachers to log their connections with kids. And we're saying, who have you not heard from? Who haven't you made contact with? They haven't engaged in any work? Who have you seen nothing from? And what's happened, what's started happening this week is the administrators and the guidance counselors were calling home, reaching those families with the contact information we have to say, why, why is your, why is your student not engaging currently? So that, that's kind of our fail-safe on that, is to go through that list, call the kids who aren't engaging, and if they say, well, we don't have an internet connection, we'll work with them to get one, and then we'll make paper copies available if needed. That was kind of the long answer to that question, but-
No, that's good, thank you.
Other questions about the overall plan? If any? Andrew, tell them all.
So going forward, though, that's the overall plan as of today. When are you thinking, or are you constantly updating things as far as when we, for out another week? Like, are you thinking this will be a constant change? Or are you kind of, this is what the model's going to be for the next few weeks, maybe months, maybe the rest of the year?
So right now, our thought process is that we wanted to establish a model, a model that wasn't going to be consistently changing.
Right.
You know, we're, we're realizing that, it's, you know, we're working as we go here a little bit, and we're gonna, we might run into some roadblocks that are willing to make changes, but in terms of the overall structure, we would like to see this model go, go forward. We built it from the concept of, we're going to be out for the rest of the year. This is not an announcement that we're going to be out for the rest of the year, but we took that kind of approach to it of, what do we want, what would we want it to look like if we're going to be out for the rest of the year? Andy, like I said, already this week, we, we, we've had some feedback, and we agree with that feedback, that the assessment piece is unclear. So we said, we need to tighten that up, give clear definitions for everybody on that, and we're willing to do that, but that's not going to change the overall structure of the plan. So I think the only thing that would, the only thing that might change any kind of structure, and that even goes back to the grading piece, is if we, there was an announcement of, hey, we're going to return to school on May 4th. So if we returned on May 4th, we'd keep the structure in place till May 4th, and then that may give us some new questions about the assessment piece. Stephanie raises her hand next, and then James, and then, so we'll start with Stephanie and James. We'll start Stephanie first, then James.
Hello, thank you. I have a couple of questions. I haven't seen, okay, it's a point first, I guess. I haven't seen many complaints. I have seen some chatter, I have heard some chatter from people. How is the best, like, contact for this? If someone's having an issue, do they contact their teacher first? If they're having like an issue on understanding, I guess, what is expected?
If.
If they're having trouble, like, with the grid?
Okay, so if they're having trouble with what's expected, what work they have to do, I would always encourage them to contact their individual teacher. If they feel like the, the structure's unclear, and it's a larger question, they can go directly to the building principal as well. But if it's specific about, you know, what do I need to do in sixth grade math with my sixth grade math teacher, I think they should contact their sixth grade math teacher. If the question is more global about, I'm just starting to try to navigate this whole thing, and I'm a little lost, then I would direct them to the building administration, the principal, or the guidance counselor.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, because I just wanted to make sure that it was clear for people, because I know that on my end, it's not clear. And also, are teachers emailing any of the students directly, or are they communicating directly with parents? How is that, piece of that working?
Well, that, that varies based on level. So at the elementary school, I would say that most of the communication's happening through parents. At the middle high school level, there is sometimes email correspondence that go back and forth that include both kids and parents, or just kids. The Jupiter Grade system allows for that. So I would think that people are, and I think that, so some of the feedback we actually got from this past weekend with the rollout of the plan, is we had some parents saying, I got too much information. You know, that I had every teacher email me, I had Mr. Schultz email me three times, I had you call me and send me emails. You know, there was almost too many people were reaching out to me, and I'd rather just have a little more direct information. And we're hoping that these, these platforms that they've created, these what we're calling landing pages, are going to be clearer for parents. If the parents are really struggling to understand the landing page, I would really ask them to contact the building principal. If they're having, and I got to be repetitive, but they have a problem with a specific assignment, it's to contact the teachers, but the whole, is the long-term process is that the, that landing page will be reset by the principals every Monday. So in theory, a parent would just have to log in on Monday and say, this outlines the work for the week. And then they have their own structure in terms of when and how that work may get done. Some teachers may say, hey, get this done by Wednesday, get this done by Friday, you got, they're gonna have to look at those pieces, and if they have questions about that, they can ask the teacher. But it shouldn't be like it was last weekend, where every teacher's emailing them, and the principal's emailing them, and I'm emailing them. I think it should be a more clear, clear pattern of, hey, go check in, the landing page email comes on Monday morning, check that out, if I have some specific questions, reach out to the teacher. But they're not going to necessarily get an email from every teacher on Monday morning about what's happening in their class.
Okay, great. Thank you so very much, Scott, I appreciate it.
James, I'd like to raise.
So more of a comment than a question, actually, and you provoked another one as we were going through all of this. Both my personal and my professional emails, I tend to keep pretty clean, but I went from like, you know, 20 to like 520. I'm getting every email possible, I got a kid in middle school and a kid in high school, and it's just one after the other. And I'm not making a complaint with that, actually. What I would like to do is suggest to Andy that I think we create some kind of official letter to thank the teachers for working through this and all this hard work they've put in, because it's a lot, man, and, and it's difficult, because it's all new, and it's all coming so quick and just a constant change. And I, I know from the responses that I'm seeing in my emails, that they are just really trying to reach out and get in contact with everyone they can, and stay within the guidelines that they've been given. And I really think we should somehow give them a formal sort of thank you for their, their time and their efforts and what they're trying to do with this.
Scott, I unmuted myself.
Absolutely. You can, you're the chair of the committee, you can do that.
James, I totally agree with you. This is an unprecedented, it's unprecedented situation, and I think, you know, obviously the teachers and the staff, for sure, I mean, I think we, we can include everybody in that, whether it's separate letters or not, but the, the work and dedication that our staff and, you know, all of our staff has shown through this is very admirable, since we don't know what anything is bringing. But actually, so I agree with you on that. But that brings me to a question. I was going to raise my hand, Scott, but since I'm already speaking, I'll ask you directly. Is there going to be a point of reevaluation on this, and how soon will that be? And actually, I should have asked this before that. If there's a parent that finds that their child is either being too stressed out from the, what's going on in the world and in the workload, or are doing things very easily and getting things done quickly, who would they speak to? The individual teachers to, to adjust the workload, or?
No, for that question, for that concern, I would go to the building principal, who may put that piece out, put that back out to the guidance counselors for support, if someone's feeling like they're really overwhelmed. And a message I'd like to send to the community is, you know, if there's, if there's extenuating circumstances that the school district is not yet aware of, we want you to and we need you to communicate those circumstances, and you should do that either through your guidance counselor, who your, your, your student works with, or clearly the building administration, the principal, the assistant principals that you're building, the person you most feel comfortable reaching out to in that group. You know, and we want to work with families, you know, because there is a, there is a, there is a reality that the biggest concern about all, well, there's a lot of concerns about this. But equity is a concern, and the challenges that families are facing are a concern, and the supports that students have are a concern. You know, so we try, we're trying to develop a system that can meet all students' needs to the best of our ability, with the reality of, we're going to have to make adjustments, we're going to have to make variations within this larger structure to best support students. And, you know, so for some students, it may be that they, they can access limited work, and we're going to have to look at what that means for credit, no credit at the end of the situation, and, and take that into consideration. And, and on the other extreme, you know, students are doing really well and want to push themselves, we have a list on the website of additional resources that the kids can go out to and access, but I'd be concerned about reaching out to the teacher, that my initial response, I'd start out to reach out to the teacher and say, can you accomplish some more stuff for me to do? Because yes, that, this is causing a lot of, it's going to cause a lot of individualization of instruction, we want that to happen. But I don't, I think we, I would, my initial response would back who's charging through everything, is to use some of the additional resources on the website if they wanted to. Or just read a book, you know, pick something they're really interested in and read, and do that, instead of necessarily saying to the teacher, hey, can you give me more, more things to do? But on the other extent of that extreme, this kid who's really struggling, make sure you reach out to someone who you feel comfortable to do that with. Principal, guidance, et cetera. And Andy, in terms of the, a letter of thank you, that's something I can certainly work on drafting and, and run by you, and, and have, you know, obviously have you, you and the community approve that before it went out to the staff, but that's something I can work on next week.
Terrific.
That goes for admin as well, Scott, I just, I'm not going to exclude anyone there.
Yeah.
And then-
Good idea, James.
And then, I just, before we moved off of this, I just wanted to say that, you know, the, the creation of this document, there was a lot of people involved in discussions, I want to thank everybody who was involved. You know, that Joint Labor Management Committee, which I think has over 30 people on it, administrators, support staff, teachers, really have put a lot of time and energy into coming up with having these, having all these discussions about what's in the best interest of our kids in Carver. And I think that's 100% been the focus of everybody on that committee, I think, has been, what can we do to best support our students? So I'd like to thank, I know Tammy's on the call, and I know, you know, I think Tammy may be the only, Tammy Meredith of the people who are on that committee, but, you know, obviously, there's, there's a lot of people who have done a lot of work to put this into place, and I want to think, thank all the teachers for everything they've done to get us up and running. In terms of revision, that Joint Labor Management Committee, we met, we met today, we're going to schedule another meeting within the next week or two. So the way we set up the memorandum of agreement is that, that group's going to meet periodically to review what's going on, raise concerns and questions, and then if we have to make tweaks with this overall, overall larger structure, we'll notify people of, of those tweaks as, as they go. To go back to Andrew's original question of, do we see this as the structure we want to maintain?
Okay. Was that the end of your update for that, Scott?
There's no, no action required on that.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or concerns? Not seeing any hands? Okay. So we're going to move on to, basically, our 2021 budget updates.
And so Brad, Brad's going to give us the updates on both of those things, and if it's time to do, Andy, he might transition right into the first recommendations from the superintendent, which is FY '20 budget transfers, those kind of things, and all go together.
That's fine. Okay, that's fine, we can do that.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right, perfect. So before we start, I just want to give you guys an update, and you guys have been following on with the food service. I just want to, one, thank all of our food service staff for continually rotating, coming in and serving our lunches. Today, we actually got up to 59, it was our highest number. So we could expect that number will continue to increase as we move forward on this. And I also want to thank Berry Guys, who actually donated all of their meat, they are actually closing down for this time period, and they donated a bunch of meats to our food service department that we were able to use and give out to the community. So thank you to those guys. And our surplus food at the end of the week, we've actually been turning it over to Shane Gibbs Thanks, Kath Farrar has been in contact with Crystal over there, so all of our food at the end of the week that's not being used is being sent over. Any questions on that piece?
Just wanted to, just to go on James' point about the letter, can we put together a little letter thanking the Berry Guys too, Scott?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All right, and we'll start with just FY '21. Scott and I had a meeting last week with all the town department heads to go over what the estimate was for FY '21. The guidelines that the current town administrator gave us was to keep status quo on our budgets for right now. If we are able to have a town meeting sooner rather than later, the expectation, in his opinion, would be that we would be rolling in with our current revenue projections. I think we all know that those are going to come in lighter when we actually get official numbers, and if we were to have a budget shortfall, they expected having, he expected having a special town meeting to reassess. Scott and I are keeping an eye on our expenses, and we would be going with you guys to whatever numbers end up finalizing for FY '21, if we need to do a budget adjustment, obviously, we'd work with you guys to get that number finalized. But the opinion right now of the current town administrator was to stay status quo on FY '21. And Scott just actually forwarded me an email from MASC stating that they are scheduled to have a Senate Ways and, Ways and Means Committee meeting on April 14th, but they're not expected to give an updated budget projection for FY '21 until May, if not later. They did not expect to roll anything out in April. With that being said, too, for FY '21, we just got our yearly pre-enrollment charter school numbers. They're expecting us to have 73 kids out. We know that number never comes to fruition, but unfortunately, our cherry sheet has the number built in on that, and we have to use that number. It's not going to look great, they haven't published what the exact tuition and reimbursement estimate is on that, but I can tell you, we get into- But I can tell you, we get into this process every year with them over projecting, um, based on students' interest in the school. But we never hit that official number, um, but it throws us off in Meg's tax rate recap sheet that we have to actually put on the number that they project. And at the end of the year, that money, if it's not spent, does roll into free cash. So the town does get that money back that's not actually expended on charter schools. But it's a hard number we have to put on our, um, cherry sheet, on the tax rate recap sheet. And that will impact our budget. Um, so just wanted to note that.
Brad, Jason raised his hand out of question.
Go ahead.
Hey, does that mean that, excuse me, that 73 is the cap? Or if, say, there were 74 kids, what would happen there?
So 73, why they do this preliminary number is they wanna give the town a cap of dollars that the town may be assessed. So 73 kids right now have shown interest in charter schools. Um, and we have the breakdown between Sturgis and South Shore Charter and-
Rising Tide.
Rising Tide, yep. And there's one more too. I can't think of the names right now. That's on that list. What was it, Scott?
Nap Academy.
Nap Academy, yes. And what that does, Jason, is that if, if someone submits a letter of interest, they use that number to give the town a pre-assessment. So 73 students have shown interest in Carver, um, to go to one of those four schools. So they mark them on the list and they do that because the town doesn't want to be liable for an overage amount if more than 73 go. What we've run into the last three years since I've been here is that number is way too high. So just because a student shows interest, they mark them on that sheet and they say, you may be assessed this number. Our reality is we've never have close to 73. I think if, if you look back on last year, I think they projected us to have 63 or 64 out. We ended up with 55 this year. And we're only gonna be assessed 55, but the problem is the original estimate number has to go on your tax rate recap sheet and it just throws off all of our projections.
And the only piece that I don't touch, Jason, is that if, if for some reason the number ended up over, that number is the max. You cannot get charged more than that.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. Thank you.
The state actually protects itself in some way by-
Saying this is your tax, this is the max you could get assessed.
I got you. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yep. But we've never come close to any of their projections, which is why you hear us always complain about it, but the state does that to protect themselves to say, hey, we gave you the heads up, 73, 74 actually applied. Anyone else have questions on FY 21?
Nope.
Scott, can you see hands raised? I don't have the, uh-
No, no, no hands. Sorry.
Perfect. All right. And then on to FY 20. So the MS, MASC actually published a report that said the mass state revenues actually were at 1.1% higher above the benchmark revenue, um, through March. Um, that is positive. But we all know, um, that after March and April and to beyond will be significant impacts on the revenue that state gets in. With that being said, they weren't publishing any cuts that they projected right now. At the department head meeting last week, everyone was told to, obviously, we're in a budget freeze right now. Anything we need to expend, we're still gonna expend. Um, and we'll go over what our potential savings could be. I have that marked later on. Um, we can go over that, but, uh, where we are right now is the state is still pushing you to keep everyone on your payroll. And with that being said, what we've done is we've kept all of our base pay for employees, um, permanent employees on the payroll, still being paid. Any extra activities such as, um, bus aides that were doing extra time, those are not being paid right now because those are turned in on a time sheet. Anyone's base set reoccurring pay is continued to be paid. We may run into an issue with our, a couple revolving accounts, athletics and food service specifically. I've been sitting on a bunch of conference calls with DESI with regarding business managers and how to handle certain revolving accounts and expenses. And most people's take on that was you're gonna, we're gonna have savings in our operational budget to cover the shortfall on these shortages for revolving accounts and they're, they're proposing to do journal entry, um, transfers of expenses from their revolving accounts to the operational budget to cover those deficits. We may, like I said, we may run into an issue only on food service and athletics. But we'll cross that bridge when it comes, when we get closer to the end of the year with final numbers. And we know we're staying out for the whole rest of the year as well. And that was all I have in FY 20, um, until we get into the budget transfer. So anything on just general?
Do you wanna add in, do you wanna add in the, um, the reimbursement we got qualified for, for for the meals, the grab and go meals in there?
So with that, the state did approve all, all meals that we've served, starting from the day we started serving meals for the grab and go lunches. We are being reimbursed through the USDA at the free rate for all meals served. So we've opened this up to any student in need, um, we is able to get a meal from us at the grab and go. And again, that's from 11:30 to 12:30 at the elementary school.
Good news, anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely. And actually, on Fridays too, we're doing this program where under the program that we, we are eligible for, for reimbursement, you actually can do weekend meals. So we've been giving out meals for Saturday and Sunday as well, and we're getting full reimbursement back for that.
So they're giving, so people can get extra meals for each student?
Yep, for distributing for the weekend. Yep.
Brad, Andrew raised his hand.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just thought I could probably throw in the motion now before we dive into too many questions. So I wanted to make a motion to, uh, approve the proposed budget transfers.
Good idea. Uh, do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we motion a second, uh, so further discussion.
All right. So on these specifically, Scott, if you can scroll to line 173.
Maybe. Uh, I think I have to open it in sheets to do that.
No, you should be able to scroll on that.
All right, maybe. Maybe not. There we go. Very slowly.
A lot of them are just small dollar amounts to clean up accounts.
173.
Yep. The first big one is 173. We actually can start with 171 and 173. They're both transportation lines. The first one, 171, we're gonna have a significant savings in K through 12 because the extra time slips and extra activities we do for, um, our, our, our bus drivers do are now being essentially put on hold. So we're gonna project to have a decent savings right there, right off the bat. We're gonna take 17,000 of this. And all of these transfers, I should say, that we're proposing are to cover our special ed offset. So we would not have to request any money back from the town to fund our sped overage. But I'll get into those lines specifically later. The second one is line 173. That's our sped special ed transportation for contracted services for vendors outside of the district. We've had a few changes throughout the year, so we were gonna have a savings on this line anyway. But with the freeze right now, um, we've actually suspended all of those routes right now, so we're not paying those out. And that is 41,000 at least, so we're gonna move that over to special ed. Next line, Scott, is line 214 to 215. It's our electricity savings. Um, so we are, I know I mentioned to you guys before that we have utility savings. This specifically now is we're gonna start diving into these piece by piece to move them over. So I'm proposing that we take 40,000 right now from the primary, uh, excuse me, the elementary school for electricity and 30,000 for the middle high school. I really think we're still gonna have a lot more play in these, um, by the end of the year. But just for offsets right now, moving this money over, we are, I'm projecting just that for right now. But these will, if, I don't think they're gonna double, but we should see in the 30 to 40 to 50,000 maybe if we are out for the rest of the year in savings just on those two lines combined.
The, um, Brad, the HVAC system of both buildings, are they on, are they operational right now, just on minimal?
They are on minimal, yes. They asked Dave to turn all of them down.
Okay. And where, where did you wanna, uh, transfer these to, the special?
If you look, overall, what I do is I take the, I take amounts we're gonna take away and these actually end up going. When you see the bottom two li, bottom three lines at the bottom of this, you'll see where the majority of these, these amounts are all going.
Okay.
The next two lines, Scott, are, um, line 240 and 245. If you actually scroll all the way down, you'll be able to capture everything. Go down a little bit more. It'll capture everything. This has it all. So line 240 is $109,000. This is from health insurance savings. And this is in regards to drop offs that we had from our original enrollment numbers to start the year. We had, as you guys know, in February, we used our exact health insurance numbers. And we had a few drop off during open enrollment and throughout the year, um, whether they hopped on their spouse's plan or they just dropped our, off ours in general. We had $110,000 savings on that line. The second one is line 245. That is retiree health insurance. Because retirees and Medicare is a mid-year tran, it's a mid-year adjustment, I always put an estimate on what that will be. This year's renewal rate came in much lower than projected, so we had, uh, $20,000 savings in there. And then if you look at the last three lines, line 247, 248 and 249, all of those were the sped overages, roughly, let's just say, right around 200,000 that the, the savings we had in other lines are able to cover all of those shortfalls and make us whole right now. So the good news about that is we do not have to tap into the sped reserve account that the town created. Which comes into play later on too, that with the town looking at its revenues and what we have for free cash and possibly having to lay off employees at some point, we are gonna run low on the unemployment account line that they created and right now in free cash, they're projecting, and we talked to Michael about this, Scott and I did, they're projecting to move over 100 grand into the sped reserve account. Right now, we're at a good place with that, so we may offer them to move that to unemployment benefits that's shared between the school and town, rather than put a deposit into the sped overage account.
Okay.
Again, that has, it's free cash, so it has to have town approval, but I think we're in good shape right now. We have just under 300 grand. We have not had to tap into that. But again, all of these transfers and savings throughout this first journal entry, um, excuse me, the budget transfer covers our special ed overages.
Great.
So we're in good shape on that end.
I don't, I don't see any hands raised. I don't know if there's any questions about, uh, the proposed budget transfers.
If there's not, I just wanna talk, I'll talk quickly just about the potential savings tab, so I think you could open that. So what I did on this was I had Meg, um, chat to me about if we are to stay on a budget freeze, where we would end up. And what I did was I just calculated rough numbers, honestly, if we were to stay out for the rest of the school year, where we may fall. Again, this is very preliminary. But if you look, uh, the majority of this comes from our utility lines and our facility lines. If we are to stay out for the rest of the year, in, it took a little bit of, um, expense on there still because Dave is still gonna have things that we need to do before the end of the fiscal year, um, but minimal expenses. And if we are to save on certain lines, this is where we came out pretty easy, pretty easily with $300,000 that we could turn back to the town, which would help them if we are short on our revenue projections in FY 20.
Very good.
No action needed on this at all, just a rough estimate for you guys to look at.
Hopefully, hopefully, we aren't out the rest of the year, but that's good to know, anyway.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns, uh, going forward on that?
One other thing I wanted to mention too was there's a CARES Act that was passed. There's still not much information about this, but this is in regards to federal money that they're gonna give to the state. And the state's divvying it out between higher ed, elementary ed, and a few other emergency relief funds. 215 million is projected to go to, um, DESI in regards to K through 12 schools. Of that, the rumor on the street through my business manager meetings is that towns will be getting 83% of their Title I allocation. What that does for Carver, that would give us 142,000. There's no specifics on what that can be spent for. There's no specifics on if that will be a infusion in FY 20 or FY 21, or what timelines or dates will there be on that. What they are projecting that all, all schools throughout the state will get a piece of that to spend. But there's been no specific set, um, fiscal year that that could be expended on or criteria of what expenses are eligible.
It would be great if they did something like they did back in 2008, where they had that stimulus money and I think school districts, I can't remember if it was either had two, either two or three years to spend that money in the district.
Three-year window, yep.
And the district could actually decide what year they spent the money in. Uh, so it'd be nice if they did something like that, uh, to give you some flexibility in terms of where you'd use that money.
And Scott, I wanna say, when that happened, that was like, Carver got what, almost 3 million, was it?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we got over, I think it was over 300,000, like 350,000.
What about the SF? That was a whole, that might be a little bit different piece, but there was a big federal stimulus thing for jobs that I think Carver got a significant amount of money.
Well, the Ed Jobs Bill.
Yes, yes, yes.
We were able to use that. And it may, it may, I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't the superintendent at that time.
I was still in college.
I was the building principal, um, and maybe it was over 250 each year. But basically, that, that money was allowed, you were allowed over a three-year period to spend it. And the district could make the decision. You could, you could look at your, your budget over the next three years and say, yeah, we're gonna use it evenly or no, we're gonna save, we're gonna use all of it in year three. You could split it up how you chose. So that would be, if they gave us some, uh, flexibility there like that, that would be nice.
Absolutely.
All right. Um, is that, is that it, Brad?
Yep, that's it.
Okay. So we have to, um-
You have a motion in a second, you just need a little call vote.
All right, sorry. Catching up here on my phone, which turned off. I'm, I'm reading the agenda through my phone. Okay, we'll start with Andrew. We'd like to, uh, yea or nay for the budget transfers. James?
Yes.
Stephanie? Is she unmuted?
Yes.
Yes. Jason?
Hi.
Hi. And Andy?
Oh, yeah, I didn't hear Jason's. Yeah, okay, and IMES as well. It's unanimous. All right, appointment to Old Colony School Committee.
Okay. This year, we had only one person apply for a vacancy on the Old Colony School Committee for one position. Uh, that person is Joanne Pushkar, who is the incumbent and would like to return to the committee next year. Uh, as a reminder, a couple of years back, um, we, we discovered that the appointee authority is supposed to be with a joint committee of the select board and the school, and the school committee. Uh, but based on the current circumstances of COVID-19, uh, and virtual meetings, uh, and there only being one applicant, we were in contact, or I was in contact with the town administrator and I think Andy was in contact with Ryan Clark as the chairperson of the select board. And said it didn't make sense for those to have that joint committee come together, uh, to have a virtual meeting to appoint one person for one seat. So they agreed, uh, that the appointment could happen at individual meetings. So the select board's gonna vote, uh, or consider to vote to reappoint Joanne Pushkar. And then I'm proposing that, uh, the school committee tonight, uh, appoint Joanne Pushkar as the representative on the Old Colony School Committee. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Mrs. Pushkar.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I lost the thing. I, uh, moved to appoint Mrs. Pushkar to the Old Colony School Committee.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Andrew raises his hand, I don't know if it was to make the motion.
All right. Uh, any further discussion on this candidate? Seeing none? All those, is this a roll call as well?
All the votes, the virtual meeting is real call votes.
That's right. I keep forgetting that. All right, Andrew?
Yep.
James?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Unanimous. She's reappointed.
There you go.
All right. Um, okay, so we're gonna move on to April vacation.
All right, April vacation. Uh, last Friday, the Commission of Education put out guidance to superintendents, that school committees can make a decision to keep working during the original scheduled April vacation. And then that school districts would only have to go to the 181st day on their originally approved calendar. For us, that'd be Friday, June 19th, instead of going to Thursday, June 25th, uh, if we kept the April vacation. After my, everyone, we agreed as part of our MOA with the EAPC to keep April vacation. So really, uh, we would have to have teacher support, uh, to decide to continue to work through April vacation. The EAPC polled its members this week and they voted 129 to 30 to continue to work over the vacation week. And then the Joint Labor Management Committee met today and also agreed and supported, uh, making that change and having us work through the April vacation week. And from the language of the MOA, we believe that the joint, the Joint Labor Management Committee has the, the power to do that. It said it could make changes based on recommendations from state or federal, uh, officials or guidance from state or federal officials. In my personal opinion, uh, if we, if I knew we were going back to school May 4th, I would say, let's take April vacation and get as much face time with the kids. But I think there's a really good chance, uh, again, for those watching, nothing officially yet, but I think there's a really good chance that we're not gonna be going back on April 4th. Uh, so I actually think it makes sense to work through the April vacation and school on June 19th. I, I just think people will be more productive, uh, during that April vacation week. I think it will keep some continuity with our remote learning plan, which we just put in place. Otherwise, our remote learning plan would be in place for two weeks and we'd be taking a week off. Uh, and I, so I, I'm supportive of that decision. And so I guess I'm proposing that- And I, so I am supportive of that decision, and so I guess I'm proposing that the School Committee entertain a motion or make a motion to eliminate the April vacation and have Tuesday, April twenty-first through Friday, April twenty-fourth be school days. Monday, the twentieth, is Patriots' Day. That is a state holiday, would have to be observed, and so it would be a four-day work week. So Andrew raises his hand.
Yeah, I just wanted, I totally agree with everything you said, but I just wanted to propose the motion. So I will, I move that we revise the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school calendar to eliminate the April vacation and make Tuesday, April twenty-first through Friday, the twenty-fourth, school days.
Do I have a second?
Jason raises his hand.
Jason, I need a second from someone. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Anyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about if families, I know people aren't really traveling, but appointments, people traveling, students and staff, what repercussions would there be for staff who already have previous commitments, or students who just can't get the work done if they don't have enough going on?
In terms of the staff piece, obviously, we've polled the staff, and thirty people want to keep the vacation. They may have specific reasons for wanting to do that. And what we've told the staff, as if this was approved by the School Committee tonight, that they should reach out to their building principal, talk about what concerns they have. You know, some examples of concerns people said they might have is, and I don't know any of these are true examples, these are just, these were hypotheticals that were thrown out as part of the discussion. You know, someone actually has a cabin way up in Maine and is able to travel to that cabin, and that was where they were going to go for April vacation. We would not tell that person they could not go. And, or if someone gave, another hypothetical that was put out there was a staff member historically, or has a, has a, has a member of their family who, who has, is medically fragile, and there's another member of the family who consistently cares for that person, and historically, April vacation, this person takes over that care and relieves that person of that pressure. Again, none of these were real situations to my knowledge of Carver teachers. These are just hypotheticals of the discussion. And in our response to all those hypotheticals, where it was, we would ask teachers to notify the building principal. The building principal, myself, will work with that teacher to make sure that they can, in essence, maintain the commitments they had, talk to those kids, talk to those, the kids those teachers have, and maybe there'd be a little bit reduced work, maybe there wouldn't be a community time that week, where they'd be required to have that community contact, and we'd make appropriate arrangements over the next week to support those kids, those families. Same thing on the family side. We would say to families who had prior commitments to reach out to us, and we want to work with them. You know, our general sense is, Jason, is that those numbers are really small. The feedback, I know, we did not poll this community, we didn't poll all the parents. I have had parents specifically reach out to me, and a lot of the, a lot of the teachers have actually said they've had parents reach out to them and say, we think it would make sense to work through the April vacation. So any advocacy we've heard at all from parents has been to work through the April vacation. But again, I didn't do a scientific poll, I didn't put it out to the entire community to get feedback on that. But there were a couple of teachers who actually said that they, they originally were thinking they were going to vote to keep working, I mean, sorry, to keep the vacation, and they had actually heard from parents about wanting to keep that continuity during April vacation, and ultimately have things for the kids to do, that they think there's a value in that. And so they actually decided they were going to vote to continue to working through April vacation because what they had heard from parents. James?
So I guess in a sense, you answered my questions, because there was no really community outreach to see how people felt about this at all, but the staff vote is like four fifths, so that's pretty clear. I guess the, just trying to look at all the sides, the only downfall, and the only one I can think of, is that if this does, if you don't go back, that means the remote learning will continue as well through the year?
Correct. So back to school, remote learning will go through June nineteenth. Other questions?
Anybody? Seeing none. Let's move to a vote then. Andrew? James?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Jason?
No.
Okay, and I'm aye. All right, so it's four to one. The motion's approved. Okay, reports on the School Committee.
Okay. So the one thing here is superintendent's evaluation. So the committee has to complete my form of evaluation of my two-year self-directed growth plan. I've linked the formative template in the background and some other documents for you to look at. I'll pull up the template for the community, so they'll be able to see that. So I'm going to review my goals for the year. As a committee, as part of the formative process, you have to rank each of my three goals as either no progress, in progress, or met. And you also have to decide if you want to keep my rating on the standards list below, which I'll reference in a second, the same as last year's summative. So there's four standards for the superintendent, four big picture standards, and as part of the formative piece on a two-year plan, the committee can decide to just maintain the ratings that were given last year, or they could change those ratings. If you decide to raise or lower a standard rating, the committee would need to explain and justify that decision. Next year would be a full summative evaluation like it has been in the past. And then just in terms of my overall ratings for last year on the four standards, instructional leadership was proficient, operations and management was exemplary, family and community engagement was proficient, professional culture was proficient. The only other background piece I would give before I start talking about the goals and ask any questions about the process is, you know, the last few years, really since I've become superintendent, we have done the superintendent's evaluation piece in the April meeting with the thought process of, you know, generally, we're obviously, we're in a unique circumstance this year, but generally, the town meeting would be coming up next week, the elections would be coming up the third week in April, and we give the opportunity for the committee to weigh in on the superintendent's evaluation prior to the election of new committee members. So I put it in here because we've done it in April, every year I've been superintendent. You know, if people felt like they needed more time or wanted to look at a different place, I think that would be okay, but I'm also fine with, you know, my recommendation, obviously, to be go forward tonight. So I just wanted to get, see if people had questions about the process. And I see, Jason, do you still have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is, this is a new evaluation cycle, so why are we referencing the previous finished cycle in terms of your ratings from last time? If it's a new cycle, wouldn't we just be giving new ratings? I don't understand why we have to use the old.
No, so actually, even on the teacher's evaluation system, at the time of the formative, you either maintain the ratings from the previous evaluation, or you can give new ratings. You certainly can give new ratings, but it is an option, and this is in the teacher's system as well. And if you look at the form, if you go down on the form, and this is the DESI form, evaluator is assigned the same ratings as prior summative evaluation, no comments are required. The committee could choose evaluators assigned ratings that are different from the prior summative evaluation, and then comments are required if any standard for which the rating has changed.
That's fine, okay. That was new to me, that's all. Okay, I never, I've never seen that piece before, so.
And that is true in the teacher's evaluation system as well.
Huh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Any other questions?
Seeing none.
So then I would go to my goals, and then we'll just look at each of the three goals. And Jason, I guess I'll just go back to your question. Ultimately, that's the committee's decision. The committee could decide, you want to go through each of those four standards and give me a different rating. You can certainly, or even reaffirm the same rating, you can certainly.
Yeah. It wasn't about what the rating would be, it was just about the process and why we went back, because I just figured it was a new cycle, so we would start fresh. So that was, that was the purpose, I guess, of the question.
All right, so we have to have a vote on each one of these goals of either no progress, in progress, or met, is that correct?
That is correct, and just give me a second to pull up the goals.
And each one of these goals have to have a separate motion and second, or just?
Yes.
Just a vote?
You need to vote on each of the goals. So I would think, in my mind, it would make sense if you could have different, because you could have different ratings on each of the goals, that you would entertain a motion and vote on each goal individually.
Okay.
All right, so I'll just quickly review the first goal, and then I'll defer to the committee. I mean, this was in the background, and I'll certainly read what I wrote in blue, but my thought process is read the goal, and then you can make a decision, and you can review what's in there in the background, and then make a motion and vote. So the goal was professional practice goal. In order to foster, in order to foster effective relationship with the community, I will work with the administrative leadership team and teachers to improve communication and effectively market the County Public Schools as measured by increased communication activities, sharing of district events and celebrations, and a parental survey, and then tied to the concept of engaging the community in our educational blueprint. And so my personal recommendation, if I can make a recommendation on the goal, I can read what I wrote in blue, as I said. My recommendation is that this is in progress. I don't know if I've met every aspect of this goal, haven't done the parental survey piece yet, I clearly can always be doing a better job looking to market the school. So my, my actual, overall, my recommendation here personally, my personal self-assessment would be in progress, but I defer to the committee.
All right, well, I'd entertain a motion for Goal One, to put this up for a vote, for one of...
Jason raises his hand.
Oh, Jason, go ahead.
That was to make the motion, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. I moved to rate Goal One in progress.
Okay. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, no, I thought we, as we've done it in the past, Scott, didn't we each get asked, if like, I mean, for your, for your prior one, we had the proficient or not proficient, or are we doing the same thing with this, or we all have to agree?
Nope. You can go through, and as a roll call, people can go in progress. So I guess you could approach that way, that you could go through the roll call and have each person give their individual rating of no progress, in progress, met.
Then do we, then do we really need a motion for each goal, or just asking for...
I guess not necessarily. I guess we need an individual rating from each person, and then technically, Andy, that's my fault, technically, you're right, and then the chair and the assistant chair are supposed to review the ratings and give the final statement. That's what we've done in the past.
At the, at another, at another meeting, right?
Not necessarily at another meeting, you would just, you actually are supposed to fill out the form.
Oh, I got you, okay.
So when we go back to this document... So the chair and the assistant chair are supposed to get together and actually complete this form.
Yep.
And, and then you would make the determination based on the vote of the individual committee if my was no progress, in progress, met.
I understand.
If we look at the...
I remember that from the last time when James and Andrew did it.
This was the actual completed form from last year, right? And it actually did keep a rating of what everyone voted. So like, on the first standard, A1 curriculum, it was voted proficient, and then otherwise, you broke the vote down, and then there's a little feedback section in there overall through the whole document. Now, this is the full two-year end of, end of cycle evaluation.
Right.
But so in essence, what the chair and the assistant chair at the tight meeting would complete this much smaller form, which I, I'll get this one, where you would go in and you would say, you know, based on how everybody voted, you would say, on the professional practice goal, the overall rating is in progress.
Got you.
Mark out how people voted, and then give a rationale, you know, a couple of sentence rationale as to why that was the rating.
Right. But for my, my question for this is, I think to go forward with this, we just take each goal as we come. I don't know, I don't think we need motions for every one of them, but...
You just, right, so my fault in that, you're responding to each goal.
Okay.
In that case, I'll have to resend my motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And whoever second, they'll have to resend that, too.
Do I need a second for rescinding the motion from Jason?
Yes, I'll resend the motion.
Okay, all those in favor? And a roll call, roll call for that, precision? Andrew?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. All right, so let's go with Goal One. I'm just going to announce the goals, and I'll just get on the line for everyone's vote of either no progress, in progress, or met.
Scott, I have a, I have a question before we vote. When you look at the two documents, there's a difference in last year's, there was some progress, significant progress, met, and exceeded. Is that just different because it's formative instead of summative, or is this a change that they've made?
No, so this, what I did, I aligned this change with what we did with the teachers. So when we approved the new teacher evaluation system last year for the district, then we had that committee that went through and made some revisions to our own process, we changed the goal structure to, for, within the district, for our teachers as no progress, in progress, met. And I felt that would make sense. I did the same for the administrators, and so I thought it made sense to do the same for me as the superintendent. But ultimately, that, the committee could go back and say, no, you don't, we don't think that's appropriate. But if this is the structure that every other person being evaluated is following that we agreed to last year, that the committee signed off on.
Thank you.
And the ratings of no progress, in progress, met.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or further discussion before we move forward? All right, seeing none. But remember, your responses are no progress, in progress, or met, reach one of these. So for Goal One, professional practice goal, with the evidence in front of you, Andrew?
In progress.
In progress. James?
In progress.
Stephanie?
In progress.
Jason?
In progress.
And I, as well, is in progress. All right, Goal Two.
So I'll just read Goal Two and give you my personal recommendation, if that's okay with the committee. In order to ensure the district has an evaluation system that supports administrators and power professionals in improving their overall performance, I will organize a team of administrators and power professionals to review, and as appropriate, revise the power professional evaluation system as measured by the creation of revised evaluation system for power professionals of the County Public Schools. Since, since the writing of this goal, we've changed the language of power professionals to educational support professionals, or ESPs. And I would rank this as met, because we established the committee, we revised the system, and the revised system was approved by the School Committee in February.
James has his hand up. Go ahead, James.
Actually, I left it up, but I do have a question. We had discussed getting feedback from the teachers, so clearly, we haven't gone through this evaluation process with them, so we don't necessarily know for sure if, I mean, I know the committee agreed on it, but there's, there's, like, it hasn't gone through a cycle yet to really know if it's giving the proper feedback, or it's giving what you're looking for, actually, right?
No, so the system has not been put in place yet, the new evaluation system.
Okay.
Would that be in a further goal, future goal, I would imagine? Would you put that in another goal, or would that be part of this one?
I mean, from my, from my mind, the goal says, you know, the end of the goal is as measured by the creation of a revised evaluation system for power professionals, and we have put, we have gone to that place, so we do have a revised evaluation system. We haven't evaluated it yet, because we haven't put it in place yet, but certainly, we could do that. That could possibly be a future goal.
Okay. Any further?
And still hand up, or you just...
Oh, sorry, no, just haven't put it down.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any questions, concerns? Alright, seeing none, let's move on with the vote. Andrew?
In progress.
James?
Is there a way to say met with the stipulation that there is a follow-up as to the feedback when this actually cycles through? Or am I better off just saying in progress? Because I think to a point, you have met what the goal is, but I don't think it's proficiency where we actually know how this is gonna work yet, because the teachers haven't had to actually go through it yet. So I think the document itself is done, and the part is done, but without the actual feedback, I'm not sure how to fully consider it met.
Well, I guess you're going to be in progress.
Well, the way I was looking at this, James, just by reading it, it says, in order to ensure that the district has an evaluation, an evaluation system that supports administrators and paraprofessionals in improving their overall performance, I will organize a team of administrators and paraprofessionals to review and as appropriate revise the paraprofessional evaluation system as measured by the creation of a revised evaluation system for paraprofessionals in the Kava Public Schools. Now, that's in place.
It is, Andy, but I guess to my point, when you reread the first sentence, just reread that first sentence for me.
In order, okay, hold on. In order to ensure that the district has an evaluation system that supports administrators and paraprofessionals in improving their overall performance, I will organize a team of administrators and paraprofessionals to review and as appropriate revise the paraprofessional evaluation system as measured by the creation of a revised evaluation system for paraprofessionals in the Kava Public Schools.
So I guess I'm, and this is a discussion for a purpose, I guess I'm just asking that the whole thing was one sentence, so I guess the initial part where it said will, see, I keep missing the wording because there's so many in it.
James, I think you're hitting on, in order to ensure the district has an evaluation system that supports administrators and ESPs.
Yes.
You don't know-
The very next part of that, what's the, right after that?
Improving their overall performance, you don't know that's in place yet.
Exactly, that's kind of what I'm referring to. Like, how can we say that this is gonna help improve their performance when they really haven't gone through a cycle of it? So there's no, there's no evidence to prove that the work that was done is actually gonna do that.
Because it hasn't been through a cycle yet.
Right.
Alright, I got you. Alright, where do we leave, so James?
I guess if it makes it easier, I'm just torn here because I think you met sort of what it says, but have you really met what it does? There's no way to evaluate that. So I guess I would say in progress, only because I think that's something that needs to be followed through to make sure that those things are actually working.
Yeah. Okay, so you're gonna say in progress?
Yeah.
Okay, Stephanie?
In progress.
Okay, Jason?
Based on the wording and the actions, I'm actually gonna go with met.
Met? Okay, I'm gonna go with met as well, on that same reason, Jason. And I totally understand all the other points, and I would also, I could go either way, but considering what's here, I would just put met for myself. Okay, goal number three, student learning goal.
In order to develop student self-awareness and self-management skills to improve academic outcomes, I will organize a social-emotional learning team in the district. The team will work in coordination with building base of safe and supportive school teams to develop programs to assist students' social-emotional learning skills as measured by the completion of the Research for Better Teaching SEL course, review of programs, and the implementation through professional development opportunities offered to teachers in social-emotional learning. And so I, my recommendation would be met, and the summary is in the blue, the rationale would be that, you know, we have completed the district SEL course, we applied for the Helping Traumatized Drug Endangered Children's Learning Grant, which we received, which is gonna provide three hours of PD for teachers next year on supporting students on that situation, have established a district-wide SEL committee, that committee's been meeting throughout the year, the savings schools, learning communities, and that committee's actually also gonna run part of the full-day PD at the opening of next year. So whatever opening days next year will be a full day on social-emotional learning, professional development for our teachers, based upon the work of this committee that has been created.
Okay, any discussion on goal three before we go to a vote? Seeing no hands up. Okay, I'll go to Andrew, no progress, in progress, or met?
Met.
Okay, met. James?
If you offered an exceeding, I would give it on this one, because I think as a district, you guys have done really good trying to work within this field that they've prioritized a lot, but I'll go with met because there isn't anything else.
So I'm gonna write down met, met for James in capital letters?
Yeah, met plus.
Okay, met plus. Stephanie?
I agree with James, met plus.
Okay, met plus. Jason?
Met.
Okay, and I'm also a met. I'll do a met plus, too. There's no option for met plus, but I'll write it down that way. Alrighty.
Alright, so then, the thing that we have to look at is back to the beginning of the form. You know, is the committee agreeing that the evaluators assign the same ratings as the prior summative, or do you want to take each summative individually and possibly reassign different ratings? And again, the rating, there's four standards, they are instructional leadership, operations and management, family and community engagement, and professional culture, and the ratings of those four standards last year, as a reminder, were proficient for instructional leadership, exemplary for operations and management, proficient for family and community engagement, and proficient for professional culture. In my mind, this could be a motion, that, there could be a motion to assign the same ratings as the previous summative.
Okay, I agree. Oh, Jason has his hand up. Jason, you have something to say?
I have a question. Should there be evidence attached to this, or no?
So typically, in the formative, the process we've established and that we've used within our district is that you provide evidence for your goals only. So that is the process I followed here. This is a little new for us, because this is the first time the superintendent has gone through a formative evaluation. Prior, prior to this system being implemented, when the new teacher evaluation system was passed, it was, it was last, either last year or second to last year as superintendent, then I came on, I was in theory, I, in my first three years, so I had to do the full evaluation every year. And I remember we discussed this back in September, that maybe process-wise, we should have made this a little clearer, and it was my fault a little bit in terms of, last April, I didn't say, hey, I have the opportunity to move into a two-year plan with a formative halfway through that two-year plan, and the committee voted to do that in September. In our system, within our district, for formative evaluations, people have to provide evidence for their goals only.
Okay, I agree with you, Scott. I think a motion would be appropriate here to keep all the prior year's ratings the same.
I'll make a motion, Andy, to maintain the overall ratings on the four standards.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion, Jason?
I don't know, I'm having difficulty with this, and it's not about the ratings themselves, it's about assigning a rating, just to assign a rating without anything, without-
On that point, Jason, excuse me for a second. Scott, could you shed some light to that on Jason's question, what the requirement is for that? Is there, do you have any background on that, or why they need this to be confirmed or not?
So again, this is all going back to my understanding, what I've been taught about the law in terms of the evaluation of teachers and administrators and superintendents, is that in a teacher or administrator who's on a two-year self-dreading growth plan, that that person only, in their formative step, so halfway through their two-year plan, because technically I'm on a two-year cycle, and the committee voted me to be on a two-year cycle, is that, that I, at the time of the formative, that I have to provide evidence in regards to my progress on my goals, for my, in theory, the goals are for a two-year cycle. It's my progress on the, but you have the right to reevaluate your goals halfway through. That's the standard we've used in the Kava Public Schools for all of our, for all of our staff. So I did not, because ultimately, the concept would be, if I was gonna provide evidence for all of the standards, right? Like, so, and Jason, I know you weren't here last year and the other three years, but if we go back to this document that I just pulled up, what I would do for this document, what I did for all my other evaluations, is for each standard here, 1A, I would provide a written summary and two pieces of evidence as to how I met standard 1A, then 1B, and 1C, and 1D, and 1B. So if I was gonna do that right now, what's the difference between a summative and a formative?
I guess my thing would be, I guess my understanding just from, and I know the superintendent's evaluation is much different, but in any formative I've done in a two-year, there's always, it was like half of the evidence was in the formative, and then the other half was for the summative, just to keep it consistent. And that was both me as a teacher and as an admin, so as being evaluated and the evaluator. So it's just, I guess it's a new concept to not have evidence for a formative toward the standards. I've never heard that before, that's why I was getting confused.
And that's what we do with our teachers as well, and that was part of our agreement last year that we made with the teachers was, the, is that the formative would be goals only, and not have to provide evidence on the, each of the standards.
And is that Carver-specific, or is that a DESI thing?
That is Carver-specific.
Okay, maybe that's what, maybe that's why I'm getting-
The DESI language, the DESI language is actually either or.
Okay.
So if you read the DESI language, it says, you can provide, on your form of evaluation, you can provide evidence on just your goals, or your goals and your, each of the standards. That's the DESI language, so it's either or. And we have historically, just on the formative, done goals, and then in our last, when we revived, when we redid the evaluation system a year ago, we actually said that for people on a two-year plan, that it would be goals only.
Well, maybe going forward, if we decide to keep this two-year cycle, maybe we could have links to your evidence for the next time this comes around, you know, if someone wants to go back and look at it.
Yeah, and obviously for next year for the summative, I would provide evidence for all these links.
Two years from now.
The next year for, next year for the summative, I would provide evidence for each one of these standards.
Yep.
Okay.
As I have done in the, as I have done in the past.
James, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Scott, were you all done?
No, I'm all done, yep.
Thank you. James, you have a question?
Yeah, kind of a comment to Jason's, because I completely understand where he's coming from, looking for the specificity to be able to put a solid vote behind what he's voting on, I think, but to the extent, when we're looking at these, it's, I mean, a lot of these issues that are discussed and these things that are there, we talk about and we go over in the meetings, and I know it's not a window into everyday life, and a lot of evidence that Scott needs to support that, but to your point about putting links, Andy, we did this last year, we did his summative last year, we went through all of this. So I think to the idea of, he's either, something would have had to happen so that we would shift from a proficient to a needs improvement. Like, as a committee, shame on us if something like that occurred and we didn't know enough to be able to change that rating that way. The only issue that I could see a possible concern with is going from exceeding to proficient without really evidence of something there. But I think if it was a shift from a proficient to a needs improvement, it would have been something that we would have addressed during the year anyway, and wouldn't have, like, flown under the radar. So I definitely get your point in what you're saying, but I think the vote here is really to change and lower or higher any of them, or to just look at what Mr. Neef is doing in the sense of through this year, and is he continuing on the same pathway that he was on last year? And from my perspective, I haven't seen anything slow down or shift or change to call for a change in a vote to needs improvement anywhere.
No, I agree with you, I was just, I was just saying with, I was just saying with the links, just as a reference point, that's just if someone wanted to go back and look, not to, wouldn't be like to go back and open up the window again and, you know-
You mean from last year's evaluation?
Yes, yeah, for, yes.
Yeah.
And that was it, so for the formative, you have the links, and that's on me, maybe I should have suggested that, so I apologize, Jason, for that. But it wouldn't be, wouldn't be like a Scott is on trial again for that, it would just be a reference for anyone who wanted to go back and look.
Well, and I think that was to the point of why we voted the way we did, because to put evidence under every piece, under every standard here, is a lot of work.
What is?
And after the redundancy of it year after year after year, it kind of came to the point, like, it almost felt like we were making Scott or any superintendent in that part, considering the background that they have, do more than, you know, spend their time ill wisely, as opposed to focusing on the things that needed to be worked on.
No, no, I totally agree with you, I was just, like I said, I was just, I just thought maybe, was a suggestion about a little link being with the forms, or with the questions, if someone wanted to look, they could.
Jason's got his hand up still.
Oh, sorry, Jason, go ahead.
It's fine, and I just want to make it clear, this isn't a, something me saying Scott's doing a bad job or anything like that, it's just more of the procedure and making sure that everything is followed, you know?
It's process, and it's, it's new for us a little bit, in terms of the committee going through this formative process, and ultimately, the committee makes these decisions. So if you feel like this is a process that isn't ample enough as we go forward, you could certainly, you know, under the DESI guidance, you could require me to put in evidence for each of the standards at the halfway point as part of the form of evaluation, and I would do that.
Okay.
So if people going forward felt that they were uncomfortable with that, we could certainly do that, and obviously, at this point right now, if the committee felt uncomfortable with that, I could go back and, just give me some time, and I'd have to go back and go through it, and I could provide evidence for each of the standards.
Well, I for one, don't feel uncomfortable with anything, I just, just a reference suggestion for me. But that's something we can bring up at another meeting if people feel that way. James, James, go ahead.
My thought process on that would be that next year, next year when we did my summative, we would have to be really clear in April of, what do we want the formative to look like, and I can make sure that that's a discussion that happens at that time. If anything, this whole process in terms of the formative, you know, we had a discussion in September that probably should have happened in April, and maybe in that discussion in September, we should have had, I should have started with, here's the process, what do you think of this, and what, does the committee agree with this process? So I did not do that, I didn't say to the committee, here's the process, how do you agree with that process? And it would be legitimate to, or I could definitely make it as a note that I will do that going forward, you know, next year when we did the summative, to say, okay, here's the, remember, here's the formative process, here was the concerns we had last year, as we go into the formative next, the year after, let's talk about that process, and I'll do what the committee wants me to do in terms of preparing for that formative.
Okay, that sounds good.
Those are all legitimate concerns, and I appreciate those concerns in terms of process.
Well, like you said, Scott, I mean, it's all, this process is all new to us, so, as well, so as a district. James, go ahead.
Yeah, so I would, I would go to Jason and Scott on this, because I'm not an evaluator in that other sense, but in evaluations, one of the things that I notice when we've done summative evaluations for the superintendent, is it's a really lot of information to get all at once at the end, right before we have to sort of go through it all to make that vote. When you're doing evaluations, isn't there a sense where, like, you have to turn something in maybe through a halfway point, or something where you sort of present something midterm, as opposed to waiting till the summative at the end? Because possibly if there's a way where there's a, there's a way to maybe get some of the information before it's, you know, trying to, trying to put all of this together at the very end and then make a vote, as opposed to having a little bit more time to go through and digest it.
And the idea we made, that's what Jason's saying in terms of- And the idea you made, that's what Jason's saying in terms of the formative, that the formative right now should be, instead of a narrative and two pieces of information on each standard, that I'd have at least one piece of evidence.
Like, like one, like if it was standard one, like two pieces of evidence for all of standard one or something like, like that, like that's usually typically what, you know what I mean? Not per indicator, but for the whole standard.
For the whole standard, right. But also, I, so I guess, see, I'm also looking at in summative terms where when it is summative and there is a piece for everything, is there like sort of a, a point where some of it could be produced prior to getting everything all at once kind of thing, you know what I mean?
Historically, we see, as I've been superintendent, we've done that, I've given that to you the month prior, but still, it's only one month, it's three weeks, you know, advance of the meeting. And I could certainly next year break that up into different chunks if people felt better that way.
Yeah, it is a lot of information all at one, one time. Andrew, did you have your, did you have your hand up, Andrew?
Nope.
Okay. Jason, were you all done?
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Then I'll, we have, we have a motion, don't we? A motion in a second. We'll continue on with the ratings from, from the summative. Are all those in favor for keeping all the ratings, all the prior ratings intact? I'll start with Andrew.
Hi.
Okay, James?
Hi.
Jason?
I abstain.
I abstain, okay. Stephanie?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so we have four ayes and one abstention.
All right, then, as we go into next year's summative, I will try to break that up a little bit more. And then when we do the summative in April and talk about if it's a two-year plan, you know, because obviously, that's always a decision of the committee. Next year, next year in April, the committee can decide on a one-year plan, and then there's a summative evaluation. But if the committee wants to decide that we're on a two-year plan, we'll talk about the formative process and define that exactly what, what that should look like. Because that, I will say that that did not happen.
Okay. All right, so I think that is it for our official business, and now we go to, for some reason, I, I announced reports of the school committee before that, but.
Technically, the evaluation is a report of the school committee.
Really? I thought that was a, I thought it was a typo. Okay. Okay, before we close, would anybody like to have any remarks or, you know, address the committee, committee or the community with anything? See?
I'll go first. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Andrew.
No, ladies first.
Okay, Stephanie.
I just wanted to reiterate what everyone had mentioned earlier about, you know, how hard everyone is working and how much effort has gone into their remote learning plan and, and how so many people within our school or district have gone, you know, above and beyond in this unprecedented time. And I just wanted to say thank you. And I just wanted to, you know, thank all of you for everything that you put into doing this. Thank you to Scott, thank you to Meredith, thank you to Brad. I always feel so well-informed and I greatly appreciate it. So I just want everyone to please stay home and stay healthy so we can get back to the other side and get out there and start enjoying the things that we all miss, including school and athletics and seeing people in person as opposed to Zoom meetings. And I just want to wish everyone a very happy Easter. So that's it.
Thank you, Stephanie. Andrew?
Well, I think Stephanie hit everything right there. Nice job. I, just, again, I will say that Scott and the staff, I think have gone above and beyond. I, I think the key word is effort, and we, I know, I can, I feel like I can speak for the committee. We've seen it. I mean, we really have. Just want to thank you guys for that effort. So everything else, I think Stephanie already got. So thank you.
Okay. James or Jason? James?
I'll reiterate the thanks for what's going on, and I think to add to Andrew's effort, it's, it's care. It's clear that, that this, that this staff cares about our kids and is really trying to reach out to the community as a whole and make sure that everybody's okay, and they're doing their drive-bys for birthdays, and they're doing all kinds of things that aren't really required. And it's just, I just want them to know that it's really, really appreciated and it's duly noted.
Okay, thank you. Jason, do you have anything?
I do. On top of what everyone else said, I don't, I don't know how this works, it's still new, but if this is, I would like to thank Andrew and Stephanie, if this is their last meeting, because it would have been elections and they didn't rerun, so I would just want to thank them for their, their time on the committee.
So I think we're, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I've been, I have been in touch with the town clerk, and our understanding is that in essence, the current members are going to serve until the next election. So whatever.
Well, then I'll save that until next time, until the next one's that.
So whatever that next election is going to be, which I don't know, I don't know if, Andrew, I don't know if that means you're locked in for six months.
Well, it's, whenever the state of emergency is dropped, the election will be, I believe, four weeks after that.
Yeah, so whenever the, the town lowers its state of emergency, town meeting is going to be three weeks after that, and the election's going to be four weeks the next week, so.
Well, in case, thank you.
Yeah. So I think we'll have, I think we'll have Andrew and, James, we sit in his resignation. But we'll have Andrew and Stephanie at least for another month or two.
Okay.
Excellent.
Then I'll say it again in another month or two. So there you go.
Okay. Thank you, James.
Hopefully in person.
Yeah, hopefully in person, right?
I can't say anything better than my colleagues have already said. I want to, you know, also thank our entire staff and all of our town and all of our students and parents for being understanding and all, we're all in this together. This is a horrible time our country's going through right now. Many thousands of people have lost their lives from this. And now, as we see, it's not just older people, but, you know, some younger people. And I just ask you all to keep them all in your prayers and your thoughts. And try to stay as positive as you can, as you can. All right? So I'll take a motion to adjourn if anyone would like to, would like to do that.
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Andrew?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. I'd also like to thank the people in the audience here. Catherine Gellerani is one, and for people watching this, they'll, they'll be able to